Pat Berg.
Frank.
Kurt Eckes.
Here.
Kerry Taylor.
Here.
John Kron.
Here.
Brenda Mamer.
Here.
Tom Mueller.
Here.
Colin Emeier.
Here.
Louise Schatz.
Here.
Lynn Zutner. Lynn said that she will be a little late this evening, but she will be here. Bon Hujum.
Uh huh.
Matt Lemon.
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Bon and Matt, would you like to leave us off tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At the conclusion of the open session this evening, the Board may adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 for N1CNE for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any staff and for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competing or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically, this evening, we will be considering contract negotiation. The Board may reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 for N2 if necessary to act in considerations given during the executive session. The next item on the agenda is public comments and agenda requests and floor privileges. So if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment or address the Board about any issue, you will be given up to three minutes this evening. All you need to do is raise your hand. When I call on you, stand up and state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comment. You can request, make an agenda request also, or a floor privilege request to speak on a specific item that might be on the agenda this evening. And you would do that by naming the place, business, action items, date, and say you wish to speak at that time. If you do that, you will be given your three minutes to speak during that item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board? Yes?
I was duly chosen. My name is Brenda Johnson. I'm here representing Washington School PTO as well as the parents of Washington School. And we're here in concern of not fulfilling the position that Artist Marquis would be giving up when she retires. We understand that there are teacher positions that need to be looked at, but we really, really want you to consider not putting 40 to 45 kids into a classroom in a first grade or a fifth grade class. I know from my own experience, I came from Franklin School, and we had large classroom there. The teacher didn't get around to all the kids. I hated school. I didn't do well in school because we didn't get individual attention. My daughter, Bree, on the other hand, gets almost all straight A's because she comes from a smaller classroom, and her teacher is able to get around to the classroom, get around to each and every kid, give them individual attention. I also brought with me my friend Jill Van Camp, who is going to speak next.
Thank you.
I'm Jill Van Camp, and I'm a parent, and I have three children. Two of them will probably be very affected by this change next year. And I want to reiterate that I deeply am concerned about this position being vacated. I realize it was a tough decision, and I know you have to do budget cuts, but after the budget cuts come in, I'd really appreciate everybody reconsidering to fill this position. It's crucial to the education of our children. I have a child with needs, and having him in a larger class will just make it so much more difficult for him.
We have one more parent, and we have three minutes. Okay, Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie Bernhardt. I'm also a parent at Washington School. My daughter is in second grade this year. I've been volunteering with her since Head Start days. Specifically, in first grade, I read with the students, and I see what the smaller class sizes does for helping them with their reading. I think it would be real detrimental to them if they had to go into a bigger size. I think they need all the help they can get when they're that early, and I think having the smaller class sizes where the teachers can help them more is very helpful and beneficial to them. And as a volunteer and as a parent, I would really hope that you'll reconsider fulfilling or filling her position when she retires.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
I'm Lynn Schrader, 809 Betcher Drive. I am the only first grade teacher at Washington School next year. I will have a classroom of 45 students. I understand that when the position was vacated, it was not said specific that Washington School will lose an elementary teacher, but there was also nothing laid out that said where that other first grade teacher will come from. We are a Sage school. We hope that we are a Sage school next year, but if we are not a Sage school, I am the only first grade teacher there. And if we are a Sage school, our Sage money will not reach, since that position was vacated, will not reach kindergarten, first, second, and third grade the way that has served them this year because we won't have the funding to get the additional teacher. And when that decision was made, I'm sure that every parent at Washington, every teacher at Washington, would like to know where is it going to come from. I know that we were told that the district will be, will look at things again, but knowing that I'm not going to be the only person there would be very beneficial, and that it's not just going to affect Washington School, that our class sizes are not going to go up. We're an extremely needy school. That's the reason that we are a Sage school. We deal with a lot of kids that have special needs. We deal with a lot of free and reduced kids that come in with a handful of problems of their own, and I don't think that you can expect teachers to handle the class sizes that we're looking at at Washington School next year. So I, on behalf of many of the teachers, would like you to reconsider that decision.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michelle Fugier-Brown, teacher at Washington School and parent of a child coming into this first grade. I was hoping more people would be here to speak to this or to show you their concern. We had a, what do you call it?
Petition.
Sent out to all the parents, and we have over 100 families that signed it saying their concern about this. I know Jill has them tonight. If you'd like to see them, sure she can just have a note, and then we'll make comments about it. I guess I just wanted to know if there's a lot more people concerned than we're able to show up during this meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to make a request or comment this evening in the audience?
I'm Kathy Ponzer from 103 North Highs, and our daughter will be entering first grade over at Washington in the fall. She's finishing kindergarten, and she loves school, and we love the things they're doing at Washington, and it's been a real good experience. It's just hard for my husband and I to understand that in the entire budget for the whole NAPS school district, that we're going to cram 45 bright-eyed little children with one teacher and expect that to suffice, and that we're hoping and praying that that won't be the case. And I guess we just wanted to be here and to let you all know that, because those are such critical years, and we understand cuts have to be made, and nobody wants it from their neck of the woods. But these are important years, and we sure would hate to see our daughter or any of the other little classmates that she's grown to know and love be affected in such a tragic way at such an early stage, so the school becomes unfriendly and a place where she doesn't get what she needs, and of course, that could affect all of the rest of their remaining school years when you kind of turn them off to learning at that age. So we're really hoping that when you look at everything, add everything up, that you will consider the situation at the first grade there, too.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? I did receive a letter in response to that as well from Jane Chapl. As a parent, I don't, did everybody on the Board get this? No? Yeah. Okay. So everyone's got her comments as well about her concerns at Washington. Tom?
Separate issue.
That's fine.
Just want to mention on the 27th, and I, I'm sorry, the 20th, next Tuesday, and I don't have the time, but I believe it's 7 o'clock, the high school presenting the onstage presentation. Just an excellent talent show, a display of talent from the high school, and wanted to make people aware of that if at all possible. It certainly is a very enjoyable evening. If you want to really see the talent that is present within our school, it's a fun night. So I certainly recommend that to people next Tuesday. I believe it's at 7. Do you know for sure?
I believe you're right. Unfortunately, we run out of evenings at this time of the year in particular, with two other things scheduled for that night as well. So it's difficult for choices.
May 20th, is it right?
I believe so.
Thank you, Tom, for bringing that up. Anyone else? John?
Just comments. I was at the Atabacher, and congratulations to the students and schools that attended. The weather out, and I really had a nephew who's now since graduated from Three Lakes, but I've been attending the last several years, and really find it interesting. I've never been involved with track before, so for anybody that, it is an interesting time, and there's lots going on, and it's very well-run, and we get a lot of comments from other schools. Also, Saturday night was the big band bash at the high school. Again, a big crowd was there. I was very impressed with our alumni. They gave quite a presentation. And also, Monday night was the band concert at the high school, so enjoying attending all of those events. And as you say, the calendar gets very cold this many days.
Thank you, John. Frank?
While these representatives of Washington School are here, I'd like to digress a little bit from the agenda and do part of my communication piece, because there's some things I've just received today that are relevant to this. So if you're short of doctors, I'll do that. I appreciate your concern and anxiety over your perception of the Washington class size situation. I think I can assure you that there won't be any elementary classroom with 45 students in it. I'm not going to be here, so it's easy for me to assure that, but I don't believe that this Board or any other Board would have 45 students in a classroom. I also feel badly that we have a relatively small turnout tonight, but you do have a good response in terms of the petitions, and that's important. It really is. I wish the place were filled. I wish it was packed to the gills here, because we need to have that physical representation as well. Over the past several weeks, all of the administrators and I have met to talk about various possibilities that may occur as a result of our budget issues, some of the declining enrollment, and other associated factors, and what could happen with our elementary classroom situations. On the very worst end of the spectrum, we might not be able to, because of financial reasons, hire back even the two elementary teachers that have been laid off, let alone replace Mrs. Marquis's position. That, to me, is on the very worst end of the spectrum. I'm not sure what the best end of the spectrum is, because we're still at a point of absolute unknowingness as far as the Joint Finance Committee and the legislature goes in Madison. The latest word that I received today is that it's believed that the Joint Finance Committee is going to deal with the education budget just before Memorial Day. So that puts it off another week and a half or so, and everybody is kind of fidgeting around, trying to figure out exactly what's going to take place. A week ago this past Monday, CISA 9 hosted a legislative breakfast in Merrill at the arena for all of the CISA 9 schools, administrators, and boards of education. And I attended, as did Fritz Lurkey, elementary principal, and we had John Kron, Pat Berg, Brenda Mamer, and Louise Schatz attend that meeting also. At that session, and I put this in my narrative, there was Senator Bresky and Decker, and Russ Decker is on the Joint Finance Committee, and Representatives Frisky, who is from our district, Jerry Petrowski, and Greg Huber, just south of us. I'm going to pass out a two-sided sheet, and there's plenty to go around, and I've made 100 of these, hoping that there would be 100 people coming here tonight. On this sheet that's coming around is the names, addresses, telephone numbers, and email addresses of everybody on the Joint Finance Committee, front and back. And on the bottom of the backside, the address, phone number, email for our representative, Senator Bresky, and Representative Frisky. One of the comments made a week ago Monday by one of the legislative representatives, when we were talking about all of the stir that goes on relative to education financing, was that they never what? Any of the four of you?
Hear from parents.
They never hear from parents. They hear from me all the time. They hear from other administrators. They hear from Board members, but they're used to that. That's kind of a vested interest. And so, I'm always talking about the need for parents and other members of the community to call, to write, to do something. And one of the members said that, and the rest of them are nodding their head. They don't hear from you. We hear from you all the time. Our problem comes out of Madison. And I don't want to put it in terms of a problem, but our financial issue right now is structured in the framework of the legislation that may evolve out of Madison. And that's also altered by, geez, I don't know, the state economy, the national economy. There's all kinds of factors that play into this. But please, if you could get a combination of these things, you've got the addresses of these people, write letters to them, give them phone calls, send them email. As parents, as non-school people, you will have a whole lot more credibility than I have, because I'm at their door all the time for every thing. Secondly, regarding the layoffs and the positions that have been vacated in particular, and I'm just going to focus on the elementary level, and I was saying before that the administrators have been meeting for weeks and weeks now. In fact, this morning, we spent two hours talking about how we would consider prioritizing those people on layoff status if we have money in the budget to bring some of them back. And we have two elementary staff members, we have two middle school staff members, we have a band position, and we also have a still vacant middle school guidance position. We've got six spots that are hanging out there that haven't been dealt with. And we wrestled, and there was a good discussion, right, Mrs. Helt?
Yes, I lobbied hard for elementary.
And everybody lobbies hard for their things, and they're all important. They really are. So I asked each of the levels to come back with as many options as they could think of, good, bad, and ugly, as to what might happen with the elementary settings in every building if we couldn't get anybody back and we didn't get Sage money. And then I asked them to give me another set of options where we could get one or two people back, and another option that would show what would happen if we got the Sage people back. Right now, what we're talking about, that you've been hearing about, is without Sage. Everybody that I have spoken with in Madison, Republican and Democrat, whether they're on joint finance or not, believes that Sage is a real positive program, and I believe that there's significant support to maintain Sage as it has been funded in the past. And if that's the case, that will resolve a good deal of the student-teacher ratios at the elementary level, not only at Washington, but at the other buildings as well. So when you're writing your letters to the Joint Finance Committee people in particular, be sure to reference the importance and the value of Sage, the Sage program, as it relates to the positive impact on small class sizes. I'm passing out a letter that I downloaded about a half an hour ago that was written by State Public Schools Superintendent Elizabeth Bermaster, and her comments to the State Joint Finance Committee. And she talks about a variety of components that she believes from her office are very important for the legislative orders and the Governor to support. And front and back, and she talks about the Sage program as well, specifically on the backside of this. And then her last couple of paragraphs talks about the impact the budgetary crisis has had on DPI itself over the past many years. So I think Sage is going to be okay, but I can't guarantee that. Nobody can guarantee anything at this point in time. And that's one of the dilemmas that I face, that Chuck Spurka faces in Wausau, that Sally Sarstrom is facing in the Vels. We're all facing the very same kinds of things, unless you happen to be in one of the handful of school districts that have a lot of money coming in and increasing student enrollment and the like. Hopefully, by the end of this month, we'll have a little more clarity in terms of just what the budget impact will be. And for the Board members, this is sawing sawdust, but some of you are new to this. The Governor proposed reducing the two-thirds funding, and for us, this two-and-a-half percent reduction will probably cost in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 less. Our declining enrollment has ranged between 90 and 100 students less, and each month I've been giving an update to the Board members on what our enrollment looks like. Well, that 90 to 100 students less for next year is probably going to cost us another $400,000 to $500,000 on top of the other $400,000 to $500,000. We had some good news a couple of weeks back, that our health insurance miraculously leveled out to a palatable 6.5% increase. Wonders never cease. But at the same time now is taking place, Representatives Olson, Welch, and Senator Zine were putting forth legislation to freeze property tax levels. And there's a whole bunch of ifs associated with that. And if, with some of the variables associated with that, if the property tax were also frozen, it would offset my anticipated loss with the healthcare, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. And again, those people that attended that legislative breakfast, I think that's what you heard. I think that's what you heard. Correct me if I'm wrong. The one piece of good news today that came out was that today we didn't go backwards anymore, but we didn't go forward. There were some calculations being done regarding the property tax freeze and the income of revenue, delayed revenues and the like, and the recalculation shows that that figure that was previously perceived to be a further $82 million decrease, I think, in state funding, actually came out to the same as it was, so they're still looking at $3.2 billion. One of the problems that was mentioned at the legislative breakfast is that a lot of the Governor's proposals to solve this are not unlike the tobacco money from last year. They're one-time deals, and it really doesn't get us anywhere significantly on rewards. The piece that I passed around just now is from the Wisconsin Taxpayer Alliance, Todd Berry. I've spoken with Todd on a variety of occasions, and I absolutely appreciate his perspective. And this one shows some of the irony of his humor, I think, more than anything else. I'm not sure that it really gives any data tidbits, but he talks about the structure of the property tax dilemma in this state. And they've got a picture of, it's better on the backside, a dog chasing its tail. And he synopsizes that really well in these ten points. And it's going to go one way or the other, no matter who's in charge of the Governor's office or who's in charge of the legislature. So read this one. It'll give you some other insights into the ongoing nature of the state's fiscal problems. Okay. I want to bring us back to our local circumstance. In my narrative for the Board, which I drafted last Tuesday and Wednesday before I left for the remainder of the week, I tried to make some contacts, and nothing has changed. And if anybody has been watching the news out of Madison, that's the first thing I look for in the papers. Nothing has changed. As I said, Joint Finance is going to be looking at education just before Memorial Day. So we're not in a position to do anything, to make any recommendations one way or the other. But so that you can have some assurance, the administrative staff are coming back next week, next Wednesday morning, when we have our next administrative meeting, with a variety of options based on absolute worst scenario and how we can make the best of it, and then graduating ourselves up through being able to bring back one, being able to bring back two, being able to bring back the Sage people, and see what all of that looks like, and how we might have to restructure combination classes at some elementary buildings, or maybe large class sizes in certain areas. Not 45. 45 is just untenable. The first year that I taught, I had 37, I think it was, in sixth grade. Second year, I had 36. That's just the way it was. 45 is impossible. 35 is impossible these days. Can't be done. Okay. So at the 29th meeting, which is a Thursday, I'm preparing to bring recommendations to the Board about a variety of things. That include support staff layoffs that we're going to need to deal with if we want to bring some teachers back. It's the back-and-forth trading. I'm going to talk about whatever we believe we can do relative to recalling, rescinding some of the layoffs, if the financial picture looks like we can do. We don't have to do that on the 29th. We could do it in June, or it could be done in July, or it could be done in September. It's possible to bring somebody back. We talked about that at the last meeting, last year. In September, I think it was, when we had that huge bubble of kids predominantly from the parochials that went into the middle school, we added an eighth-grade teacher. It can be done. It can be done, because there's some things you just don't know at points in time. But I assure you that everybody is trying their darndest to do the best they can to make sure that we can provide optimal educational opportunities for kids. And Karen is leading the charge.
Unobnoxiously so.
Not so. So for this, that's all I, just, before you folks left and I got to my thing, I wanted to let you know where we are at this point.
Thank you. I might suggest, Jill, maybe after Sue documents the names on that petition, that you take those names and forward them to some of the legislative people on that list, if you're willing. That might pack some clout as well. Before I leave, public comment time. There may have been a couple people that have come in. Does anyone else wish to make a comment before I leave public comment time? Brenda?
Well, I did have a call from a parent regarding the elementary librarian position primarily of the outlined schools, just wondering what the potential situation is for that, whether we're still looking to hire an elementary librarian.
Here's where I think we are with that right now. I believe what's going to happen is that we're going to do an internal transfer, which we do every year, which will create an actual vacancy at the middle school. So we will post that vacancy, and then we will have the originally planned two elementary librarians. So that's in the works.
And funding for the elementary libraries as well? Is there?
It's part of the whole process.
Good. Anything else?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
My name is Marie Wardell, and I am one of the elementary librarians right now. I'm split between the middle school and Washington Elementary. I have made the transfer. I will be going to the outlined five elementary schools. I don't have a librarian now, and hopefully by the end of the month, the other internal transfer will take place. So we will have three librarians in the district then.
Good. Thank you, Marie. Okay. There is nothing else, Ben. I think we can move into, I see Mr. Peterson's joined us tonight, and I believe we have something to pass on to him, if you want to come up to the front of the room, Jeff?
Sure.
Jeff Peterson is one of our retiring Board members.
Retired.
Having served, already retired.
Already retired.
Yes, having served on the Board for six years, and he wasn't able to be at the last meeting when we honored Ron Bane. But we do have a plaque and a certificate that we would like to present you for your years of service to the kids, especially this last year when it was volunteer with no pay. So.
Anything to grant us?
Certificate of commendation to you in recognition for your service to the children in Wisconsin public schools.
Thank you.
And also a plaque from WASB, presented to Jeff Peterson for your dedicated service from 1997 to 2003. It's been a pleasure working with you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Of course, you have something to say.
Of course. I just want to say that it was very much an honor to have served with the community and served as a Board member for these past six years. Learned a lot about public education, and got a much deeper understanding and appreciation for the job that all of our staff does on a daily basis for the benefit of our students. I also want to thank Pat for the fine job that she's done the last two years as President, because of the fair, honest way that she conducted the Board operations. Did a lot to help improve the district and to bring the Board together as a cohesive group and help us with all the work we had to do. I also want to thank Frank for the six years that he and I served together. I also want to thank Frank for the six years that he and I served together. He had a lot of trying, trying incidents, trying times that came through, and I think he did a fine job in handling them and your return to this, I'm sure, it'd be very enjoyable and is very much deserved. So congratulations on that.
I appreciate it, Frank.
Thank you, Jeff, we appreciate it. And while we're on presentations, if Fawn and Matt would like to come up for a minute, I think we have a couple of things to show your dedication to the district. For those of you who might not be aware, we do have students that serve on the board. They are not voting members, but they sit at the board with us, and they're allowed to participate in discussion, and they give us their viewpoints from the high school and what's going on in the school district. And this year, Fawn Hudgens and Matt Lemon were our representatives. We have some spirited discussions sometimes. They are not afraid to, to say how they feel. We shared a couple sad moments with the loss of Chad Sharon, one of our previous board But they also spearheaded a project to have outdoor graduation this year, so we'll see how that goes. I understand that things have been put in place and you've worked really hard, so barring the weather, things should go ahead with that. These students give up their time to sit at the table on Wednesday nights twice a month, and it is hard for them with the activities they're involved in and homework and all of the other things they have going on. So we really appreciate that. I think it's going well, and they're going to help us work, spearhead choosing their successors for next year. So they'll have hardships to follow. So thank you very much, Fawn and Matt, for participating. And if there's anything you'd like to say?
Well, I, yeah, it's been a great opportunity. It's been a great opportunity. I'm glad that this got started. I'd like to thank good friend Chad for nominating me last year. It's just, it's been a pleasure, believe it or not, to sit here.
Thank you, Matt.
I'd just like to thank all the board members for being very supportive of us as we come in not knowing anything. And it's been very interesting, and we've learned a lot about how the politics behind our school and all the decisions being made, and you all did such a good job. So, thank you.
We expect you to be future board members. Okay, I will let Fawn and Matt get settled and then ask them if they have anything they wish to share this evening with what's going on at the high school or activities.
Yeah, we just participated in creating a nature at the school course, which for those, anyone who doesn't know, is a field trip for writers and artists in the school. And we come up with a booklet with the finished product, and it is not finished yet right now. Fawn and I are two of the student editors, along with three of our comrades. We have to, we have a Friday morning deadline that we will be trying to make. Lynn got a chance to look at a few of the poems that were in arts, et cetera. And we're gonna try and have that done by Friday morning. Also, link for training, training for next year, I think will be going on this Friday. I'm not sure. And so, that's a good thing, too.
And we are graduating on the seventh, finally. So I hope you all come out and see us get our diplomas that we worked so hard for at six o'clock.
We absolutely would be.
Yeah.
That's one of the most enjoyable parts of this job. Here's watching graduation. Anything else?
If that's all there is.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to the board president's communication. I think I can save these things up here. I do have kind of a stack of places that are looking for school fair exhibits and presentations. One's the NSV Annual Conference, wondering if we have anything that we want to present there. So I think I'll ask Sue if she might copy these and give them out to the board members, and then if you look at them, have any ideas, maybe administrators, we can come up with those. I was not able to attend the Maple Grove Pancake Breakfast, but was anyone here able to go? No? Oh, that's too bad, because it's always a really fun time, so. You were out of town as well.
It was the first time in six years that I've not been able to attend. Pat Arnt, obviously some of our administrators right now.
Okay, Pat, how was it?
Wonderful. The children put a lot of hard work into it, parents and other supporters of Maple Grove. They do a great program. First graders can actually collect the sap and make the syrup, and they're very, very proud. And the second graders, who were first graders last year, served the meal. Jean Byrd felt. Hope's cooked the pancakes.
She burned them again.
They were not burnt this year.
And it's usually standing room only, I think, right? They pack, they pack the cafeteria.
It was a rainy day, and it was still full of people, very, very busy and crowded. I thought we had doors kind of closed.
Thank you, Pat. National Honors Day, was anyone able to come down?
I went to that. It was very nicely done.
Law Fair Day, I did attend, Mr. Harrington did attend. I don't know if too many people got a chance to see. It was basically focused at the middle school level, grade six, seven, and eight, but we had some pretty heavy-duty law enforcement people here. It was organized through the Optimist Club, and I think some of the Octagon students helped as well to put it together. Frank was there, I was there, Jan Portman is building principal, we had Ann Walsh Bradley, who is Wisconsin Supreme Court Justice, Glenn Hartley, our local judge, J.B. Van Hollen, who is the U.S. Attorney for Wisconsin, Sean Mutter, our DA from Lincoln County, and Tom Hayden, the city attorney, Doug Williams, the mayor, Don Frisky, and Peg Lautenschlager, who is the Wisconsin Attorney General, was actually the speaker. We also had the head of the State Patrol and the U.S. Marshal from the Western District of Wisconsin. So there was a pretty incredible amount of law enforcement and judicial things going on. They had the best time with the kids. They all had booths set up in the gym, and after the speech, they went in there, they had questionnaires, and they had to get an answer from every table. Then they turned those questionnaires in, and all of the places donated door prizes. So they had like mugs from the U.S. Marshal's office and FBI hat. They were FBI misrepresented as well for different things. And squad cars were in the gym, and they let the kids get in and out, and they had the lights on, and one of the guys had all of their SWAT material and stuff out. So I think Sean Mutter had the best time. She had like a lie detector thing and a group of kids, and she'd ask a question, and they'd stand up, if they got it right, they got a piece of candy, and they'd serve them. It looked like everybody had a lot of fun, it was really neat. And they put it on once every three years so that it's not, doesn't get old, so none of these students have been through it before, so we try to do it on a three-year cycle. So we were very fortunate to have this caliber of people participate. It was wonderful. They had a chance to share as well. John, Colin, Brenda, Louise, and I went to What School Board Members Need to Know on May third, which was in Wisconsin Rapids, and learned some things about budgeting and different, different things going on, policy development, data decision-making. Hopefully everyone thought it was helpful. I don't know if anyone wants to comment on it?
I thought it was very informative, especially liked this session on data-driven. It was, it was interesting. It was kind of along the same lines that Don's been working on, trying to get, get things so that teachers can just drill down and find out what, what the students need to learn more about, and it was an interesting topic.
Thanks to Mary Gifford and for helping with the science fair. I know Frank judged, I judged. There were lots of people there that were having a good time, the kids were, some really interesting projects, so that was fun as well. Last night, I attended the Merrill Town Hall meeting for the healthy community, and that was pretty well-attended. There were about fifty-three or fifty-four people there. Would have been nice to see more, but it was the beginning meeting, and they're talking about bringing together the community to work on how we can make Merrill a healthier community, both with the schools and city government and so on. It was very well-done, so kind of watch for subsequent meetings to see, to see what might be there. They did have a speaker that came in from Denver, working with Catholic Health Initiatives that goes around and does this and kind of gets the process out there, so that was well-done. Okay, things that pass, things in the future. Did everyone get my note about the Smart Goals Training Seminar that Don Pagut is sponsoring? It's June seventeen, from eight to four, it's during the day. If you can attend, please let Lori or Don know, but there are a couple, I'm going to be there, and hopefully a couple other board members would be able to attend. They'll be working on goals, and so it'll be staff and hopefully some administrators, some board people. And I think Sally Sarnstrom's gonna try to be there as well. Reminder about the retirement dinner coming up, May twenty-seventh. If you haven't, if you're going and you haven't got your thing in, like I haven't, but I'm going to, be sure to respond so they know, they know you're coming. I think Sharon, Paul Clippel's secretary, Sharon Dieter, right. So respond to her, yes.
What was the deadline on there? How was it?
I think, it is, the dinner is May twenty-seventh, so I think the deadline is the nineteenth, right? Right. Let her know by the nineteenth, if you can go. We might know somebody that's retiring there, Frank. Sally Sarnstrom has invited a group of people to go with her to a planning session at, that CISA's sponsoring, called Differentiated Planning. And it's May twenty-ninth, which is the day of our board meeting. It's during the day from eight-thirty to four. And we've invited Paul Clippel and.
Pat Arnt.
Pat Arnt.
Tim Mickey.
Tim Mickey.
And I need to find the high school.
Okay, possibly someone from the high school, myself. I think Paul Strand, as Chair of the Budget Committee, is going to go. Louise was interested, and I would take one or two more board volunteers if somebody's able to make it.
Where is it?
That is, and Tomahawk. So it's closed, eight-thirty to four. Let me know. And I thought it was kind of nice that Sally picked up on that. She thought it would be something good for us to look at and kind of a way for us all to look at planning and processes.
Let's put a deadline of Friday, if you're going to do this, so that we can get the registration materials in. The individual that's putting the program on, Bruce Miles, put on a session at Appleton, where Sally and I were last week. And so I think, you know, she caught some of the good ideas that he was presenting at that point, and I think it would be a worthwhile experience for members of the board and members of the administration, you know, to sort of.
Why don't you let Sue know by Friday, if you're able to go, and then Sue, let me know if we get more than two people. Well, I'm giving them a call. Ron, before he left, had given me this letter, and I'm not sure that he had a chance to, to mention it, but the International Sled Dog Racing Association had sent a letter thanking Merrill Public Schools for their support of the Pine River Run that happened in February. Catherine Puffall sent me a letter, I think this just went to me. She was not able to speak at the last board meeting, but she had a concern about the possibility of losing the marching band competition, which we host in October. And that was her concern, and she was wondering if any decision had been made on that. I did not have a chance to talk with Diane, but I will try to find out from her, unless John knows.
The Booster's Met, we will hold it next year with the anticipation that we will return in some form or fashion with competitive marching on our own following year.
Okay, great. Thank you, John.
I've had a couple of conversations and emails with Diane, you know, talking about the circumstance for next year. And, you know, they are, the Booster Group and the band are planning to do parades, and they're even looking at some parades that are not necessarily in our neighborhood, but so that we can show off the kids' skills, you know, in other communities. So I think that that's a nice effort and initiative on the part of that group, and that is appreciated as well.
For those of you who might not have gotten email from Frank, John Kaufman did have hip replacement surgery, and if anyone does not have his address but wishes to send him a card, they can contact me or Frank or Sue and get that. Thank you to Sue for compiling all of the information from Mespa and all the comments, so we were able to read those that they brought to board meeting at the last meeting. And I think that's it for me. Anyone else under communications? Sweetie?
I wanted to report on a day I spent at Midway School. My daughter-in-law and I, Michelle, we assembled the kindergarten quilt. We don't have a kid in kindergarten this year, but we did this last year, too. And the kids, when they study the letter Q, make their quilt square. And so we put the, we assembled the quilt, and I have it now at home for quilting. But that happened to be the same day that Lisa Haped, the first-grade teacher, was gone at the beginning of the school day because she was at Walmart being honored, and about a half a dozen of her first-grade students were also at Walmart with her. She was honored as the Walmart Teacher of the Year, and she received a thousand dollars for that, which she took it back to Midway School and handed it over to Paul Clippel. That's a wonderful honor for her and for her school, and I'm, I'm sure that everybody realizes she is another of the teachers, a first-grade teacher who we have laid off because she was low on the seniority list, which is very sad. I'm so happy that she received that award. I hope that we can keep her in our district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Frank?
As a result of a variety of factors, we established a Joint Board of Education MTA Health Insurance Study Committee that met in February. Since that time, MTA has had a couple of sessions with Sue Leighton, the new WEAIG, our insurance carrier representative. And in talking with Mr. Hetfeld, we're going to get together again on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, at four o'clock, to continue that discussion and see what new ideas and possibilities may have evolved relative to point of service, or three-tier drug card, or deductibles, or what could be done to lessen the impact of the cost of health insurance. The only other item that I have is that your newly-appointed superintendent of school, Sally Sarnstrom, is absolutely enthusiastic. She's been on almost daily contact with me, via email, back and forth on a variety of things. We have our retreat on the twentieth, same evening as on stage. And Sally wanted to know a little bit about what the district goals were. And remember, last fall, we started with seventy-five goals, or a hundred and seventy-five or something, and we whittled it down to ten to fifteen, and then we whittled them down to three, basically student performance, site plans, and communications PR type of things. So I have given her some background information on those, and she wants to know a little bit more about that in an interactive context with members of the board, members of the administration. So at the twentieth retreat, that probably will be the main and only significant business thing that we deal with, and we'll keep it, you know, fairly unstructured so that we have an opportunity for new board members, including Brenda and Carrie, who are relatively new, to acclimate themselves with Sally and the administrative staff as well. So we'll put together a brief evening, six o'clock, we'll have something to eat. So we'll put together a brief evening, six o'clock, we'll have, something to eat. Roxy's going to put together a light menu for us. And we should be done by eight or sooner. Okay? Then on the twenty-ninth, you mentioned the program at CISA, which I think will be a dynamite one also, but Sally has gotten a little bit of information on that and thinks it would be a good idea. And I agree with her. I think it would have been nice to have heard this particular presentation three years ago, or five years ago, or ten years ago, and it may have been beneficial for all of us. And then we have, we'll have a pretty good board meeting that night. So those people that attend that will have a relatively long day. And let's see, we have on Wednesday, the twenty-first, next week, some initial negotiations to deal with in terms of the initial exchange of proposals with the MTA. That's the only session that's done in open session, and those tend to be somewhat innocuous pieces. And then everything thereafter, as is posted with our closed session tonight, is done in closed session. So that's all I have.
Okay. I will mention, Sally had indicated since she will be with us at the seminar on the twenty-ninth, she will also attend the board meeting on the twenty-ninth, so that will give the community an opportunity to maybe meet Sally if they come a little early, six-thirty.
She and I spoke about that. She's going to, she understands it's going to be a long meeting, so she's planning to spend the night and spend some time on Friday morning with me. And I'm going to try to convince Joe Winiger at the local radio station to change our scan from Thursday morning to Friday, so that if he's able to do that, we can get Sally down there as well. So we'll see if that works out.
Great. Thank you. Brenda?
I guess I'm just wondering what the timeline is when we might get some focus on the WKCE stories that have just recently come back. And also, I don't recall, did we receive a school report?
Performance report.
Performance report.
We're doing that right now. I have a sheet that shows this year's number of students in each grade level that were minimal, scored at the minimal, basic, proficient, and advanced. And I did this with the tenth grade in particular, and I've gathered all of the other, the eighth grade and the fourth grade. But at the tenth grade, I did that, I did the tenth grade one, they were eighth graders two years ago, and got those same scores. And then I did last year's tenth grade students. Kind of an interesting comparison, a little premature to bring it out, but I can tell you that your eyes will pop out with joy when you see the marvelous quantity of students that were at the proficient and advanced levels. And there's at least one reason for that that is not necessarily a positive reason. When I was in Appleton last week, most of the superintendents around the state are just beaming with joy about how well their students have done. And one of the things that's happened along the way is what they refer to as cut scores, the lines that separate each of the four categories have been changed. So everybody in the state is performing at a higher level than people are. However, this is a result, and justifiably so, because of all of our bollyhooing relative to Arkansas, Louisiana, Texas having no failing schools. And we know exactly, when we compare our test data, raw scores with their raw scores, they ought to have a ton of failing schools, but their cut marks are positioned so that that doesn't happen. And what's taking place in Wisconsin, remember, Don's made a presentation about power standards? And that's going to be the key thing coming along. Every school district is looking at power standards, the main things that need to be addressed, mastered, and demonstrated by the students relative to this testing program. And that's going to evolve also. But the math one in particular, I just, I almost fell off the chair when I saw, I'm not going to try to remember what the number was, but it's a huge number that's proficient and advanced.
So obviously the date is coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Okay. Tom?
I would hope that as in past years, we had sort of that data that says the percentages within our own school district, but also it was helpful to see where we ranked relative to other, like Valley Schools and other kinds of comparisons. That might help us more than, since it changed the benchmarks a little bit.
Actually, part of the new school performance guidelines requires us to do a report that compares us with our conference schools.
Karen?
Just too, I don't know if you know this, Brenda, we were, we sent home the individual student reports and we're able to release those to parents, but our district results are embargoed by the state until, I think it's the end of June. So we've just gotten phase one data back.
Thank you, Karen.
But feel good anyway.
Okay. Moving on then to old business, we have considered budget alterations for two thousand three, two thousand four.
I don't know that I need to reread my three paragraphs of my report and restate the things that I hear during the public comments. Nothing has changed fiscally, budgetarily, in terms of the joint finance committee. And I stated in my report, and I talked a little bit about the legislative breakfast we had, a little bit about the band situation. And I mentioned in the public comments that on the twenty-ninth, I will be coming to the board with recommendations about support staff layoffs, considerations. And if we are able to rescind any particular staff members that are on layoff or there's vacancies, hopefully on the twenty-ninth, we'll be able to do that as well. And that's our plan at this point in time. As I said, the administrators have been reading a lot on this. We met today for a couple of hours, we're going to be next Wednesday to try to finalize some of these things. The individuals on, and the support staff, the custodians in Mespa, who ultimately will receive a recommendation for a layoff, will be individually spoken with, as we did with teaching staff, so that they have that piece of knowledge before anybody else, which is one of the things we learned from last year. I really don't have anything else, unless one of the four of you would like to comment about the legislative breakfast. Any glimmers that you got from that?
Louis?
I wouldn't say there was a glimmer. It was the first time I've ever been to a meeting where there were that many legislators and nobody said anything good. I, it was, I said to Pat as I left, "I'm not sure, I'm glad I came." It's like everybody is hurting for money and nobody, no one group is going to say, "Well, take a little from us and give it to the schools." Because everybody's in such, I've never been to a meeting where things were that bad. I've never felt like that before. I was very impressed with the superintendents from the CISA district and the questions they asked and the facts that they presented to all these legislators. I mean, they couldn't miss the impact, they couldn't miss the facts, but they didn't give a glimmer of hope. I thought it was awful.
Anybody else want to comment? Tom?
Just a question, and I wasn't there, but as you read about things happening in other states, the reality of tax increases are starting to hit in other places, and some politicians are actually beginning to suggest that. I haven't heard a word of that in Wisconsin. Was there any hint of that?
There is no hint of that. Read Todd Barry's two-sided piece, The Experial Alliance, and he knows way down deep in his heart that ultimately taxes are going to have to be increased in some form or other. But at this point, it's still the political chess game that the governor has said, "No increased taxes." The Republicans last year were talking, "No increased taxes." So this kind of loggerheads piece and trying to contrive
There are no other? Yes.
I wouldn't mind being part of the PR legislative.
PR legislative, you'd like to do too? Okay. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Okay. Brenda, you let me know which one of the two negotiations you wish to
Sure.
Jo. Or Sue, because she's got the list. Let us both know. Any other discussion on committee? There is none? Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Just a quick question. Last year I was part of the bus driver negotiations. I don't know if you listed that as something or not, but
We didn't have it on the list, but we do need someone, right? Great. Okay.
Let's continue with Tom. Louis, I'd like to
No. He wanted to volunteer for something that there was no activity.
Who asked that question? Or I thought a curie would like to do something in terms of negotiation, that might be an opportunity.
Brenda?
Or Brenda.
Sure. Okay. All right. That sounds good. All right, Brenda, you can. Thank you, Tom, for volunteering, Brenda. Kind of.
Smooth. Thank you.
I think she can share one to be with us. Tom might have to join her here, just so she can
It was not a big deal, it was
Okay. If nothing else on committees, then we will move on to accept donations. Do we have something? All right.
About a month ago, or maybe a little more than that, Karen Held gave me a list of Washington School of PTO donations, but there were a couple of blank, blank, blank slots on that second page. And so we decided to wait until they completed all of their various fundraising activities. And you will notice a grand total of fourteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars as a result of a variety of activities that have been sponsored, promoted, formulated by the Washington School of PTO. That's an absolutely remarkable endeavor and it's too bad those folks all departed early. But we, you know, we send out letters and we'll make sure that they give the appropriate accolades for their efforts.
Do we still need an official motion?
Somebody should take a motion to accept these donations. What I would recommend is that, you know, kind of a generic motion to the Washington PTO donations, but then maybe listing the different activities and the amount generated by, or produced for that purchase. Actually, these are expenditures.
Oh, these are, these are what they paid for.
These are what they paid for.
These are what they paid for.
Right. And they did a variety of efforts to contribute to these expenditures.
So we're looking for a motion to accept the contributions from the Washington PTO in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars for the listed events. Do I have such a motion? Kurt?
As a parent of a student of Washington who's benefited from this, I guess I'd like to approve or accept the donations of the Washington PTO. Teacher-student supplies and activities, forty-three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Field trips and student travel, sixteen hundred and ninety-three dollars. Accelerated Reader Store, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Parent orientation taco supper, three twenty-nine. Popcorn supplies, eighty-three dollars. Equipment, TV, VCR projector stand, boombox, listening center, one thousand three dollars. Equipment washer dryer for special ed, six hundred and fifty dollars. Equipment, physical education and recess, eleven hundred and sixty dollars. Pancake breakfast and family skating party, four hundred and one dollars. Family swim party, two hundred and three dollars. Literacy night barbecue supper, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Teacher wish list items, fourteen fifty-five. Melican puppets assembly, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Northern Lights Playhouse, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Playground equipment, two thousand dollars, for a total contribution of fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Thank you.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Colin. Anything for you, Kurt?
No.
I think probably some of your dollars are in here.
All the bells in Wisconsin too.
Anything else, Colin?
It's great to see all the support from all the parents of the students.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we are voting on motion to accept the donations from Washington PTO. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. Board travel, I just have one, I believe it's in the packet. And Frank has another one, the summer primer from where? No, Quarles and Brady. Pardon me. Quarles and Brady, it is the night that we are doing scholarships. Oh, never mind, it's during the day. It's during the day. Seven-thirty to nine, in Wausau, and it would be a video conference in Wausau at the University at Marathon County. So I would be looking for a motion to, well, I'll wait. Do you have something else?
Do that first.
Okay. I'll be looking for a motion to allow any board member to attend. It is no charge. Who wishes to attend this seminar on May twenty-eighth? Do I have such a motion? Tom?
So
Do I have a second? Kurt?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Tom?
Well, I was real clear, it talks about three different programs during, I'm assuming during that time period, since it's only an hour and a half, so like three screens, would you imagine, as a video presentation? Wonder how they're going to do it?
I am suspecting there are going to be components, three sections.
I think we went to this
At a half-hour a piece.
Yeah, I think we went to this one year and they did touch on all three of these, but they did them briefly.
I see, okay.
Any other discussion, question? Okay. It's no charge, but roll call vote? Sue, can you do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Colin Newmeyer.
Aye.
Louis Schatz.
Aye.
Ms. Zettner.
Aye.
Kurt Echus.
Aye.
Carrie Keeler. John Crone.
Aye.
Brenda Ammer.
Aye.
Tom Mueller.
Aye.
Pat Bird. Aye. Anyone interested in going should probably get in touch with Sue. I don't see a deadline on here.
Before May twenty-one.
Before May twenty-one. Okay. Thank you. And?
Okay, and the sheet that's coming around is a description of the May twenty-ninth Bruce Miles workshop up at CISA nine, that Pat and Louise are going to attend. We're looking for
And one or two other volunteers.
Right, so that gives you an idea of content to be covered. And remember, you have a Friday deadline to respond to this one.
Okay. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve?
We need permission to, permission to do this as well. So I'm looking for a motion to approve permission to attend the CISA seminar on May twenty-ninth for up to four board members. Do I have such a motion? John?
So
Do I have a second? Brenda? A second, that. Any other discussion, John? Brenda?
No.
Lynn?
Caught.
It's on the backside of the sheet.
Hands free!
Which is on my desk.
Give me a gap.
Eighty dollars, somewhere in there? Sixty. But there's also, there's a CISA bracelet there that's
Oh, okay.
It says a hundred and forty dollars for the initial registrant, ninety for the second, and sixty for additional ones.
Okay.
I think that, I think there's something else going on with CISA.
So there also might be some kind of a reduction because it's
There could be.
Okay. Any other discussion or question? Tom?
I'm assuming we have money available to pay for this, in terms of that number of people. Yes.
Any other discussion? I have a motion to allow travel for up to four board members to the CISA nine conference on May twenty-ninth. Sue, can we do a roll call, please? Louis Schatz.
Aye.
Ms. Zettner.
Aye.
Kurt Echus.
Aye.
Carrie Keeler.
Aye.
John Crone.
Aye.
Brenda Ammer.
Aye.
Tom Mueller.
Aye.
Colin Newmeyer.
Aye.
Pat Bird.
Aye.
Thank you, Sue. I think it'll be a good, I think it's well worth the time and effort if we can help ourselves in the planning and processing. I have nothing else under travel. Does anyone else have? Anything under travel? Reports from committee members, I don't believe they're, unless anyone wants to volunteer because we just instituted the committees again. I have been in contact with Paul Strand on the ad hoc budget committee, and we are hoping maybe to get a meeting together at the beginning of June, so we can kind of touch base and have that group come together and decide if they want to proceed with their focus or where we'll go with that.
And I think that will be beneficial at And I think that will be beneficial after this Bruce Miles session on the 29th. I think there will be things you will bring back that will regenerate ideas and develop new things, new concepts.
Can I just ask for clarification on the policy committee? Is that more like the old policy committee, or also going over what the Ad-Hoc?
It will be doing both. So you will be handling new pro, new policies plus the review of the policies that the Ad-Hoc did this year. Policy will be the domain of this committee, that, you're understanding?
That's correct, okay.
And you put it down, right, you wanted to be on here. Okay. And we will try to put our heads together and get some tentative dates maybe for committee meetings, so we can get things rolling, and we can get in touch with people. We'll pick some dates and throw some things out there on the 29th.
We'll talk to Sally, though.
I don't think we have a free day between now and the 29th, so so we can try to pull some dates together on this end. Moving on then, if there is nothing else from the board, the next meeting date and issues, Thursday, May 29. I think Frank has indicated we'll have some budget discussions, which will probably be quite lengthy. Also, I think I've, I think I've lost a few things that we've asked for on the agenda, so I'm going to get together with Sue and Frank, and maybe we'll come up with a list of upcoming items that people have asked for, and kind of a schematic of when they'll be on.
Right, there are several other things, and I suspect your packet is going to be thicker simply because I've requested all of the building administrators to put together a review of their site plan for this year. So that's going to be a paper report, and at the 29th, they're not going to make a presentation? We did that a couple of years ago, so if you have any particular questions about any component of that, either call them in advance. We may try to answer some on the fly on the 29th, or we can talk about them afterwards. But your packet will be definitely thicker because of that, and we do have a budget thing.
Anyone else have anything under that item?
Typically, in the, in the summer months, the board has only met on one Wednesday. So start thinking about June, July, August. The next, the June regular meeting would be on the 11th, as a normal matter, of course. However, you know, we might, when we get together on the 29th, we might want to think about changing that date back a week, or we might want to do two readings in June, or, I'm not sure. But, you know, start thinking about some possibilities there. July, you know, you'll have Sally here, but typically, for sure, we've only done one in July before. So just start thinking.
Bring your vacation schedules, too, so we know when people will be on. Lynn?
I assume that if we only have one in June, that at that point, we'll be finalizing all budget things at that point? I mean, anything that we've discussed, or, and you, do you foresee that we might need an additional one before the 30th? Do you think we'll be able to take care of all that?
Anything's possible. Everybody's being optimistic about the budget package being on the governor's desk by the middle of June. That's still a discussion. So that's why I'm thinking it might be worthwhile to delay that, leaving by a week. But we'll know, we'll know more, hopefully, in two weeks. And we don't have to make that decision now, but think about it.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Just an idea, I'd like to throw out, I don't think it was last summer, but the summer before last, the board actually met at some of the outlying schools, which is kind of right, and then we stopped doing that. But I kind of enjoyed that, suggest that as a possibility.
During the year, during the school?
Or during the summer. We did it during the summer, I'm not quite sure why, but, I guess smaller crowds, maybe.
I think it was, yes, I think it was also an opportunity to see what was happening to the facilities, and, you know, so that we're getting a chance to tour our facilities at the same time doing a meeting.
You're right, we did start that about four or five years ago, and we had one in the fall and one in the spring, had some site off the campus here. There are some logistical issues in terms of recording, recording material, but, you know, that's not insurmountable.
Good idea. Anything else? Seeing nothing then? Radio schedule? Anybody else able to attend tomorrow, Mr. Harrington? I think I can be there, but, you know, you're all welcome. It's fun, come on, enjoy it. Okay, there's nothing else? Motion to adjourn to executive closed session pursuant to discussing statute 19.85 for N1CD for the purpose of considering employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation of any staffing for the purpose of deliberating in negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with a five-minute recess. Do I have such a motion? Kurt? Do I have a second? Tom? Can I do a roll call, please, too? Lynn Zutner?
Aye.
Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Carrie Keeler?
Aye.
John Krom?
Aye.
Brenda Mayr?
Aye.
Tom Mueller?
Aye.
Colin Neumeyer?
Aye.
Louise Schatz?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion, Karen, it's going for record, it's not known yet. Where's Cliffel?